Order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, could you please take the roll?
The young.
Here.
Rainer Horst.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Dan Stryland.
Here.
And Carl Stone will be joining me as well.
The state council has adopted a code of civility. As elected officials, we pledge to promote civility through extending respect to others, listening to understand, disagreeing without disrespect, engaging collaboratively, and speaking up to address incivility. And just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and broadcasted for Pella TV. Anyone who speaks to the council must come to that microphone there, approach the podium before speaking so that those listening at home can hear your comments and see you on the camera. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
For? Ben Stryland, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Stryland.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
The young.
Yes.
Rainer Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. At this time, we have opportunity for anyone that wants to address council regarding any agenda item. Please come to that microphone, state your name and address, please limit your comments to three minutes.
We are seeing 512 Lincoln Street, and I have a couple of questions about the Lincoln Street project. First of all, I want to say I appreciate that it's going to be done. But I was just wondering, one, how is garbage going to get taken care of when the street's torn up? And also, the ending day, which right now is set for the Friday before Thanksgiving, is that the ending day when they work on the street? Or when the street is open again, assuming there's no problems?
I don't know. Can you answer those two questions?
Yeah, we have our engineering attendants this evening.
Okay.
We'll make sure we address those points.
Well, we'll address those when we're talking about it.
Appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Can I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Brandon Horst DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Rainer Horst.
Yes.
The young.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Stryland.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the public hearing on Lincoln Street reconstruction project bids, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And for those in attendance and those watching at home at Pella Fiber, I'd like to direct your attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor Dward stated, tonight's public hearing is on a proposed street reconstruction project. This is Lincoln Street that we're discussing this evening. And specifically what this resolution would do, that we're considering this evening, adopts the plans and specifications for the project. It also awards the contract as well. Now, it's important to note, this is a complete street reconstruction of Lincoln Street, and it's to start about 100 feet west, or 100 feet west of Houston Street, and it'll extend out to East Third. So it's this yellow highlighted area that we're showing up here. Now, as far as the engineer's opinion of probable cost, it was just over $1,073,000. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Bid opening for the project was held on June 12th, and we did have three bidders, and you can see the results of the bids that we had up there. The lowest responsible bidder was Blommer's Construction, just over $1,040,000, and we had fairly tight spare ride on the bids. TK Concrete was the high bidder at $1,190,000. Now, the engineer on the project is Gardin and Associates, and they are recommending awarding the contract to the lowest responsible bidder, which is Blommer's Construction. And staff is also in agreement with this recommendation. Now, approved by council, the final completion date for the project will occur by November 21st for the project. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. I'd like to call on engineer Gardin Brady, you to mark to address the completion date if you could, please, of the project.
Yes, the completion date would be complete and ready for public maintenance. So if it goes according to plan, traffic control should be down, C and should be done. And the project should be covered by that company, so.
Now, as far as the logistics on the project, as far as garbage pickup, our standard practice is we put an informational flyer out to the neighborhoods on it that directs people, and we will have those types of details before the project is initiated. Is that correct, Brad?
Correct, as far as how that will work for garbage pickup, is that, and it is a stage project as well, so there's more distance between, um, four and a half times, so.
When's the projected start date?
As soon as we get contracts turned around, so.
A month from now?
Four weeks.
Okay. Are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any written comments, Mandy?
No written comments.
Council, comments, questions? Any other comments from anyone out there? I think they addressed your questions, so. All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
For?
Ben Stryland, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Stryland.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
The young.
Yes.
Rainer Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Now, we move to the resolution number 6861, entitled Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract, Essentive Costs, Receiving Bids, and Making Award of Contract for the Lincoln Street Reconstruction Project. I assume there's nothing to add, so I'll take a motion for approval.
So moved.
For?
Hopkins, Ben Stryland, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Stryland.
Yes.
The young.
Yes.
Rainer Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. It wasn't much under, but it was underestimated, so. Okay, moving on, resolution number 6862, entitled Resolution Adopting Amended Wage Scale and Job Classification Structure, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item, and it's important to note, we talked about what the council is considering this evening as wage adjustments for the city's workforce. These would be effective on July 1st of this year and extend through June 30th, 2026. It's also important to note, the proposal we're discussing this evening is the same proposal we discussed on June 30th. Council at that time directed staff to proceed with formal consideration of this item. Now, overall, when we're looking at the wage adjustment for the city's workforce, it has been matched back to the Employment Cost Index. And specifically, this index stated for our government workers, the average wage increase is right around 4.5%. It's very important to note that this includes merit as well as cost of living, so the index that we have is at 4.5%. That was also included in the city's budget as well. So what is being proposed, let's go ahead, please, Mandy, is the 2026 budget included a 1.5% cost of living or wage scale adjustment. It's commonly referred to as cost of living adjustment. In addition, employees not at the top of the wage scale would be also eligible for merit step increase of 3%. So if you added both of these together, we'd be at 4.5%. Now, if council were to approve this resolution, we have estimated our total budgeted compensation increases for the city's work staff, workforce, just over $330,000. So, Mr. Mayor, we are recommending approval of the resolution this evening, and we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For?
Brandon Horst, Ben Stryland, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Rainer Horst.
Yes.
Dan Stryland.
Yes.
The young.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6863, entitled Resolution in Support of the Central Iowa Regional Transportation Planning Alliance Multi-Jurisdictional Application to the U.S. Department of Transportation's Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A Grant Program, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to refer your attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor Dward stated, what we're considering this evening is a grant application for the city of Pella. As part of the Central Iowa Regional Transportation Planning Alliance, that's the group that manages the federal funds or the federal gasoline tax for the distribution in the, and the association that the city of Pella is in. And overall, with the SRTA group this evening, they are considering four projects for the safety grant award, or safety grant through the U.S. Department of Transportation. It is important to note that one of the four projects is what we commonly refer to as the University Street Corridor. We're going to go over that here very soon that we have. But as far as the corridor, and I believe, Mandy, we have a map of it as well. It extends on University Street when it transitions down to Idaho Drive, down, all the way down to Highway 163, and all comes all the way up to East A Street and just stops short of Pella High School up here as well. But when we talk about the corridor, we have a variety of projects that we're proposing in it. And I'll cover two items that we have as far as the improvements to the streets on here. A, we'd be looking at a resurfacing project that would be just west of Main Street and extend on this blue, purple highlighted area right over here to Central Drive. That would be a resurfacing of this segment of the street. During that project, as a part of that project, we'd also be lowering the profile of the street as well, right at the Central College crosswalk as well. If you'll notice, there's a railroad crossing, a former railroad driveway crossing, so our intention is to lower the profile of that segment of the street. Now, once you get on east of Main Street, we'd be looking at street reconstruction on this red highlighted area that we have up here as well. And so with that area, that would be total street reconstruction. The exciting part, not the exciting part about it, is it's a street that needs a need of replacement as well. As a part of that project, we'd also be installing a bike trail as well. So what's been included in the preliminary plans would be an eight-foot bike trail. And that would allow us to connect Caldwell Park all the way down to the city's bike trail system, and it will extend down to Lake Red Rock as well. And what we have identified in the other areas, the corridor, its potential, and speed enforcement measures that the city may consider adding in those segments of the corridor. But overall, Mandy, let's go ahead, please, and talk a little bit about the total cost of this project. Everything I just explained in this project is almost $3.9 million. And what our obligation is, in submitting this grant, is A, this project has to be done, so the street resurfacing and lowering the profile of the road, as well as the street reconstruction on University Street would need to be done within five years of the grant award that we have. In addition, the city would be responsible for 20% of the total match, of total cost of the project, which we estimate is to shy of $3.9 million. Very important to note, as part of this project, is it is a safety project that we are considering the city in a regional safety project. But as a part of this, we would be also conducting neighborhood notifications, public input meetings, and we will be soliciting input at Central College and the Public Community School District as well. We have received a support letter from the Public Community School District on this project, and so there'll be more communication with both those entities as well. So we are recommending formal approval of this resolution this evening, and with that, Mr. Mayor, we'd also be happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For?
Brandon Horst, Hopkins, discussion? Is there a timeline?
Yeah.
Do you know what the timeline is?
Yeah, the timeline that we have for the project is we're estimating that hopefully it will be notified on the grant award by the end of this year, 2026. We think we're going to have to, we're probably going to be obligated to do a federal, what's called an environmental assessment for the project, so that'll take place during 2026. The resurfacing, when we get on west of University Street, Mandy, maybe it might be easier to pull up the map while I'm talking about this. So the resurfacing, lowering the profile of the road, this blue, purple area, that's 2027. The red area would be 2028.
Mike, is there, would there be any traffic lights on the red section?
Traffic lights?
Traffic lights at all? Is that in, is that in the proposal?
What we have, as far as the red section, I don't believe it would be traffic lights, but there would be additional traffic enforcement measures. Items that were initially identified by the surface staff that's in the safety action plan would be larger traffic signs on there, probably additional traffic and speed enforcement measures on that area. But as far as traffic lights, we don't believe there'd be any additional traffic lights in there.
That's just like the, the heaviest traffic stretch of the road in town that's not like a main road. It's just stop sign, stop sign, stop sign. Kids go to school.
Something we could evaluate as part of the project. We don't believe it meets necessarily the traffic warrants for them. It's something we could evaluate as part of the project.
And, and the speed bumps, how would that go for you?
On the speed bumps, I would also just clarify that originally when we took a look at the safety action plan, what was included by the safety surface staff, as they mentioned, sa- safety and speed bumps. In our grant application, we have somewhat of ability to modify the grant application. Staff inserted the word "may" includes speed bumps. It's something we'll evaluate, doesn't necessarily, we'll be installing them, but "may" gives the council the option if we choose to do so, so. That's a key word, "may."
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll vote on the, the motion. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Rainer Horst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Stryland.
Yes.
The young.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving to resolution number 6864, entitled Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Community Project Funding Grant Agreement Number B-24-CP-IA-0754, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board. And as Mayor Dward stated, what this resolution do is actually approve a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the University Street Extension Project. As council is aware, we're planning to extend University Street from 240th Avenue all the way up to the County Line Road. It's about a mile of a street extension. As a part of this project, in addition, we're planning to extend Baseline Drive to connect to University Street as well. Now, as a part of that project, we actually solicited and were awarded a grant, a federal grant for this project, an amount of $1 million. What this resolution does is approves the grant agreement and also will authorize the staff to execute, deliver the documents necessary to administer this grant. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we are recommending approval this evening.
Okay, can I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
For?
Ben Stryland, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Stryland.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
The young.
Yes.
Rainer Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6865, entitled Fixing Date for a Public Hearing on the Proposed Vacation of a Portion of the Public Sanitary Sewer Easement Located Within the Area Platted for Prairie Ridge West Flat 1 and Prairie Ridge EPCON Flat 1, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item, and we do have a new development coming online. It's the EPCON development that we're going to be considering in the month of July as part of this, where the city sanitary sewer for this project was actually rerouted on, on this project. What we're going to be doing as part of this project was vacating the original sanitary sewer easement. The sanitary sewer has already been rerouted. So what this does is actually establishes July 1st as the public hearing date for the proposed vacation of the former sanitary sewer easement for the EPCON development. During that evening, we'll also be considering the final plat for the development, as well as acceptance of the public infrastructure, which will be additional upon this easement being vacated. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For?
Hopkins, Ben Stryland, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Stryland.
Yes.
The young.
Yes.
Rainer Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6866, entitled Fixing Date for a Public Hearing on the Proposed Vacation of Public Water Main and Sanitary Sewer Easements on the Pella Corporation Property Located at 102 Main Street, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, to summarize this request, what we're simply doing is establishing the public hearing date for proposed easement vacations for the sanitary sewer, as well as their water mains on the Pella Corporation campus. And we're setting July 1st as the public hearing date for this project. Now, it's important to note, during the month of July, we're also going to be considering an environmental covenant with Pella Corporation. And what this simply means is if we need to access their property to access any of the public easements that we have on their property, we would agree to follow their required procedures for accessing their property on, on that. And so that is on July 15th. There'll be more information coming on this, but it's, again, it establishes the procedures that we need to follow if we access, if we need to access Pella Corporation's property. Now, with that, since we're going to be also referencing the existing water and sanitary sewer main easements that we have on the property, it's important that we have what you would call cleanup of, of the issues. So on July 1st, what's going to be proposed is some of these easements we have no longer need on the Pella Corporation property. We're going to be vacating or proposed to vacate them on July 1st. And so, again, all we're doing this evening is to setting July 1st as the public hearing date. There'll be a series of easement vacations that are no longer needed on the Pella Corporation property, and this is in preparation for July, July 15th. We need, so with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation.
Can I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Brandon Horst DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Rainer Horst.
Yes.
The young.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Stryland.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6867, entitled Fixing Date for a Public Hearing on the Proposed Vacation of Public Water Main Easements on the Trigen LLC Property Located at 102 Main Street?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a very similar emotion that we're making, and again, Trigen is an associated corporation, a Pella corporation. Again, what we're simply doing is proposing easement vacations, and what this resolution does is establishes July 1st as the public hearing date for the easements that we have with Trigen.
Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For?
Ben Stryland, Brandon Horst, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Stryland.
Yes.
Rainer Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
The young.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6868, entitled Resolution Directing the Acceptance of a Proposal to $15,605,000, and the Amount is Subject to Change Local Option Sales Services Tax Revenue Bond Series 2025A, and Approving the Form and Authorizing Execution of a Bond Purchase Agreement, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as Mayor Dward stated, this resolution awards the, the bond purchase agreement to DA Davidson, and also authorizes staff to sign the statement and contract for the bonds, to sign, assign them to DA Davidson. Now, as council is aware, the proposed bond issue we're discussing this evening is to help finance the Pella Indoor Recreation Products Center. And we do have Mr. Michael Maloney with DA Davidson in attendance this evening to discuss the bond sale of council. With that, I'd like to turn it forward to Michael.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I will be relatively short of a suite, and this should be a pretty consistent conversation of what we discussed about two months ago when we had the decision to move forward with the project and the related financing. So first slide here, just a little bit about the current bond market environment. Just, I think we're all aware of some of the tariff and inflationary concerns that remain in the marketplace. That being said, I like to remind everybody that municipal bond interest rates, the tax of bonds are still relatively low on a long-term historical basis. And while they are ticked up from some very low levels during COVID, we've had a good run over the last week or two, seeing a little bit lower levels on interest rates, which is positive. Always remind folks, on the day we have bond sales, there are two factors here. One, you control, one you don't control. So what you do control on something like this is the credit quality of the city, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit more, and the type of bonds we're issuing. The second is just where interest rates are. There's a municipal bond index similar to like a treasury yield curve index that we're going to track regardless of who we are or what we're trying to do. For pricing today, we used yesterday's closing benchmark for that. Throughout the process review, pre and post pricing information with comparable bond issues both within Iowa and nationally to ensure that pricing was sufficient and adequate for the issue today, and they were in line with those results. Mandy, next slide, please. So this information, I'm not going to read off the screen, the screen, this is consistent with what we talked about at the April 15th meeting, but the city council has the authority to issue these bonds based on the extension of the 1% sales tax collection that was voted on a couple of years ago. The term of that collection runs through December of 2043, and that's consistent with the final maturity of the bond issue that we're talking about. The last thing I'll reiterate a little bit later is we looked at both, if, if revenue stayed the same for local option sales taxes, then what it would be over the remaining term based on the historical growth assumption, which is just a little bit under 4%. Again, just reiterating what we talked about a couple of months ago, we wanted to show the work. So just on the bond issue here, we changed this from the plan of how we issued the sales tax revenue bond issue two months ago to the action of what we actually did, and we followed through with each of these steps. So I know council's had on the agenda since April, a number of administrative steps to be able to allow us to get to today's action point. But behind the scenes, there were a number of steps that council, that staff participated in, primarily securing the rating for this bond issue, which I'm going to talk about further in a minute. And then, secondly, making sure the offering document was prepared to be able to deliver to investors regarding the bonds over the last couple of weeks. So this is kind of, again, just showing the work here, but we did target issuing these in the summer to close next month so that funding would be available for those equipment purchases to get the project underway, as I know the city will have some obligations under those contracts in the near future. Here's what we care about today, pricing results. So the final par amount, $15,610,000, was the final par amount on the bonds. So pretty consistent with our expectations were throughout the pricing process. The rating on the bonds was A1 from Moody's. That is specific to this sales tax revenue bond issue. As part of the process, Moody's also reaffirmed the city's outstanding AA3 rating. And I want to mention that because Moody's provides a scorecard as part of that rating feedback. I like to think of it as controlling what the city can control. And what was really interesting reading on that scorecard is that the city either had the highest or second highest rating on every single category of what it could control. And in fact, the city's AA3 rating is only where it is because you're limited by the size of your tax base and population. So you're kind of out hitting your size on a national scale. That's something you maybe don't get a lot of feedback on regularly, but I thought it was an interesting part of the Moody's report. Some good late night reading material if you're interested. The second piece that I would mention here, we talked about this possibility two months ago, and it's been something we've visited the staff throughout the process of projecting the bonds. But we wanted to solicit municipal bond insurance for this project. There's two main insurers. What they do is provide credit enhancement for the bonds. So even though we have an A rating, we're able to market the bonds with a double A credit in lieu of the insurance premium. And that math is usually pretty good on an 18 and a half year bond issue like this. The other thing that it allowed us to do is provide a surety policy in lieu of funding a reserve fund, which is like the requirement to have to set aside a full year of debt payments. Paying interest on that is not efficient, so by being able to have these policies, it was able to lower the interest cost of the bonds and allows to issue fewer bonds, hence being lower than the $17 million not to exceed that we talked about. So we were optimistic to be able to do those things. We were able to achieve those things, and combined, it costs $50,000 less than we expected those things to cost. So good news all around from that standpoint. All-in cost on this, the true interest cost is kind of the blended rate, not exactly, but think that is your APR for your own personal or commercial financing needs, was a 4.54%. Now, municipal bonds are serialized, so there's a separate interest rate for every maturity year, so we use that blending as sort of the shorthand here. So that 4.54% should be thought about, hey, that's over an 18 and a half year term, which is favorable. We've always been in kind of the mid 4% range for planning on this, going back several years, maybe a little bit more conservative than the early go of several years ago. But again, on an average life of 11 years, that's favorable under the current market environment. Interest will start to be favored this December, and again, the final payment on this will be in December of 2043, which matches up on the last month of the current sales tax collection. And then the bonds will be callable in eight years with no penalty. That's a pretty typical lockout period on something like that. This is a similar slide, and I can get into numbers, but I provided something along these lines two months ago for the, what is the projection of debt service against sales taxes look like, in both the no growth and the growth scenario? You don't need to spend too much time looking at this slide as effectively the exact same as what I showed two months ago. We stayed with the same constraints of using 50% of the projected sales tax revenue over the life of this sales tax issue, based on that historical growth assumption. So what you see is what you get. Just wanted to show the work here today. Just a little bit on the timing, kind of the inside baseball here, but we had the offering document for investors out about a week and a half ago, and used last week to market the bonds to investors. Today was where investors put their money where their mouth is on the deal at 10 o'clock this morning, and we wrapped up midday. On the $15.6 million of bonds, we had a little over $15 million of orders once we had everything there. DA Davidson is taking the risk in taking down bonds and the rest of the pricing just to get things done today. So everything will be finalized with council action tonight, and we should be good to go with the remaining timeline on the next slide. So today locks everything in, and it's just paperwork from here to closing. At the July 1st meeting, your bond attorneys at Allers and Cooney will provide a very healthy stack of loan documents for the mayor to sign. And that'll be the final action council takes on this bond issue, and then we'll provide those funds to the city on July 17th. No council meeting necessary for that action, so. So a little bit of speed round there, want to be thorough, Mike, staff, if there's anything I was missing, please let me know. Otherwise, happy answer, any questions you might have today?
Thanks, Mike. Any questions for Michael? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the resolution.
So moved.
Or Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call and roll.
Butler.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Strick.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brandon Horst.
Yes.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to give congratulations to the city on this. A lot of communities talk a lot about projects like this. Very few are able to get the money where their mouth is, whether that's from the city or from the other partners. So I just want to congratulate the city on that and then just hope council understands how much work staff has done on this over a multi-year period. I know there's been a lot of talking council and workshop meetings, but the behind the scenes, there's a lot that goes into it and just putting their best foot forward. I talk to Moody's all the time. They don't get to talk to Pella all the time. They were impressed, so just wanted to give that national feedback for you, but I appreciate the time. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to resolution number six eight six nine entitled resolution approving the agreement for joint use of facilities for the communications distribution system between the electric utility and the telecommunications utility. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, as Mayor Horst stated, what this resolution would do would improve an agreement between our electric utility and our telecommunications utility for the joint use of the city's communication distribution system. Now it's important to note when we talk about the communications distribution system, we're talking about the city's fiber optic network. And to oversimplify matters, what the fiber optic network is currently being used for is by Pella Fiber for high-speed internet connections as well as video and voice services for our customers. The electric utility will be using the same fiber optic network to provide advanced metering infrastructure for its customers on it. Now initially, when these assets were constructed, the joint use or the share of facilities, and these are basically two things, what we commonly refer to as the outside plant. So this is the fiber optic system that's in the public right of way. As well as the building, the new building that is shared between electric and telecommunications, electric and Pella Fiber. Those assets were initially financed by the electric utility. So what this agreement simply does is allocates cost to the telecommunications utility. It establishes the framework for payments from the telecommunications utility over to the electric utilities. So Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now as far as the engineering assessment on the assets used by Pella Fiber on the communication system, about forty-seven percent of the capacity of the system is used by Pella Fiber on the system. The rest of it is dedicated to the city's electric utility. And that was an engineering analysis conducted by the city on this. Now as far as the proposed payments from the telecommunications utility to the city's electric utility for these shared assets, the total is a shy of seven point four million dollars over the next twenty years if council were to approve this agreement. Equally important to note that this agreement was reviewed by the city's auditors as well as the Pella Fire Bond Council, and we are recommending approval of the resolution this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Brandon Horst DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call and roll.
Brandon Horst.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Strick.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number six eight seven zero entitled resolution approving professional services agreement of the Garden and Associates for the apron expansion project at the Pella Municipal Airport. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, as Mayor Horst stated, this agreement of Garden and Associates is for an engineering services agreement for an expansion of the apron at the Pella Municipal Airport. Council is aware, we discussed this project exactly two weeks ago, I believe, on this, and council at that time was in favor of proceeding with the apron expansion project on this. And what this project will involve is expansion of the apron as well as the service road. In addition, we're also going to be grading the site for the proposed new hangar by, that is to be constructed by Pella Corporation. We have a picture of the new hangar, our Pella Corporation's proposed hangar as well. So Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now as far as the not to exceed fees without permission on this, we have both preliminary and final design as well as construction administration on this. And we believe that fifty-five thousand dollars is fair when you look at the complexity of the work involved with this project. Now as far as the schedule is concerned, what we're looking at is breaking this up into two phases, which the hangar site being graded by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. And basically the hangar site graded as well as the apron site and the service road. So the site, entire site grading is going to be completed by December thirty-first. The apron and the access road extension would be completed by September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. Now council, those would be the days if council were to approve this resolution. And in summary, Mr. Mayor, the staff is recommending approving approval of the resolution this evening.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Or?
Brandon Horst, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call and roll.
Brandon Horst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Strick.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number six eight seven one entitled resolution approving professional services agreement with Terricon Consultants for Materials Testing and Special Investigation Services for the Indoor Recreation Center. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain the segment. As Mayor Horst stated, what we're entertaining this evening is a contract with Terricon for material testing and special inspection services for the Pella Indoor Recreation Center. Now under our contract of Shai Hadri, the city is responsible for third-party construction testing for the rec center. Now the testing that we're discussing this evening, the components involve testing of the structural elements, the foundation, concrete. We're also going to be doing testing of the site grading as well as compaction. And there'll be a review of the underground utilities as well as by Terricon. So Mandy, let's go ahead. Now on this, Shai Hadri did solicit proposals for these services. Terricon had an estimated fee of ninety-one thousand dollars, the second firm that we had was over a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Now Mr. Bob Bean started to review the proposal from Terricon and stated that he had no concerns with it. And it's also important to note that this type of testing may deal with public buildings of this magnitude, it's fairly common as well. And so we wanted to pass that along. And the best way to look at this facility is if you are dealing with, basically the rec center was a twenty-nine point nine million dollar project. And if there's a problem with the concrete foundations or anything, it could be rather painful for the city. If you had an independent firm conducting these testings, and if we had to reject any of the components constructed by the contractor, this would give the city the ability to help hopefully reject, I'd say insufficient work or any type of problems. Hopefully it will be able to identify before it becomes a problem by conducting these types of tests. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, we are recommending proceeding and approval of the resolution this evening and proceeding with the proposal by Terricon. And with that, be more happy to answer the questions the council may have on this item.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Brandon Horst, Hopkins, any discussion? What happens if Terricon identifies the work of materials that aren't up to spec? Do they have the authority to shut it down and replace?
Yeah, what would happen under that scenario? It's my understanding they communicate that vote to the city in Shai Hadri. And Shai Hadri would be responsible for notifying stall, in this case of the deficient work, but also along with the instructions that it needed to be replaced and fixed.
Okay, we'll vote on the motion. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call and roll.
Brandon Horst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Strick.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Can I get a motion for approval of abstract of bills number twenty-one seventy-seven?
Vote to approve the issue warrants.
Support Brandon Horst DeYoung, any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call and roll.
Brandon Horst.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Strick.
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council members have any other business you'd like to have addressed this evening? I just want to make sure that I give you an invitation to the groundbreaking ceremony next Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, at ten AM out at the rec center. You'll all come and don a hard hat, stick a shovel in the ground, ten AM, Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. Be a few, got a couple people to make some remarks, and so we'll have some fun. So if you can all be there, that would be great. I think we have ten hard hats lined up, so.
And the cooler people will bring some hard hats.
And there's Pella Rec, the organization's going to give out little basketballs and so. So invite, invite your friends and neighbors, kids. I'm not sure exactly where we're going to do it yet. They, I don't know if anybody's been out there, but they've moved a massive amount of dirt. So anyway, be kind of fun. Anything? Okay, any member of the public have any other business you'd like to address us with this evening? If so, please come to that microphone, state your name and address, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Jenny Batulo, and I live at eight sixteen East Washington Street. And I work at Independence Village Senior Center here in Pella. And it's been brought to my attention that there is no longer meals on wheels for the seniors of Pella. I've reached out to, you know, any, you know, people I can think of in our community that would serve it, you know, service that. And nobody has an answer as to why it has stopped. And one of, one of my residents is just so saddened by this because her cousin, who's ninety-one, can barely stand and let alone make himself some meals. And he knows that he's not getting the right diet, but he, he can't, you know, go to the market and get stuff himself or prepare the meal himself. And she said a lot about their seniors here in Pella are struggling with the same thing. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention and see if there's anything we can maybe do for these people.
Do we know who was providing this service before it stopped?
Um, the only answer I can get is that the well was, and then now they just do one meal on Mondays, and that's if you can get there. And then the only other answer that I got was mom's meals out of Ankeny, but that, that you have to go through red tape, you have to go through your insurance company and, and all of that. And these people don't have the strength to do that. They're hungry and they need food now, let alone find an insurance company for a meal.
Yeah, I believe if I remember correctly, it used to be meals on wheels, it was through the county.
I think that.
But then the well did take it over, and I think delivered for a while, but now they, then they had it at, at their location. But as you say, I think maybe they did that five days a week, but now it's maybe, I don't know about.
Now it's been cut to one, it's only if you can make it there. And they, and they, they would just like to afford the same luxury, or not the luxury, but you know, the same rights as the Knoxville residents because they still get meals on wheels. And the Pella residents would like that as well.
Well, I don't have a good answer, good answer for it. I, like I say, I think the county used to do it, but they don't anymore. Been having it for quite a few years.
I, I agree with you. It is a wonderful program. And I did do a little research on it and did reach out to the county. And they indeed used to staple it to communities and, and as a person that has headed up multiple not-for-profits, to me, if this is a passion. I think that organizing a group of individuals that could then go into a not-for-profit and then ask the city government to, if they had interest in partnering, asking churches if they had interest in partnering. I think you'll get, you'll probably gain some ground fairly quickly. But correct me if I'm wrong, for the city to just take over the program and mastermind it, I'm not sure.
Could you guys maybe at least fund it and then like we could figure out the logistics like between churches? And then my Aunt Chris works at the, the food shelf, and they have kitchen in there. Maybe we can do something, you know, we could, we have to do something. These people build the community and they're hungry. And we need to help them. I feel led by the Lord to help them.
I think, I think that's kind of what Lynn was saying, is if there's an organization or a group that would want to actually do this and come to the city and request funding, we surely would, it surely would be considered here.
Oh, very great. There's also a lot of grant opportunities that those funders, the Philanthropic Funders, would actually take a project like this and really would embrace it. So, you know, this is the type of program that does have the ability to take wings. It just needs individual, passionate individuals like yourself to formulate the group that masterminds the program.
Can you please like give me in touch with those people or the information to get in touch with those people?
Yes, the, the problem, well, you would have to gather your people.
Okay.
You would gather your people. And then you would do searches on philanthropic giving in Marion County. A lot of the grants are dedicated in first part of the year. And like for us as well, our budgetary restraints, our budgets go out the first of the year, right on finalized in March and April. So sadly, there's a little lag in time, but my suggestion would be in December is when you would start to strategize and determine who you would ask for funding.
Do you have any ideas?
Have you, have you had any conversation with Melissa Zuma at the food shelf?
No.
She'd be a good resource. She's pretty creative and is good at getting things done and so. I don't know that the food shelf prepares meals, but Melissa might be able to help you.
Okay, maybe you might even reach out to Second Reform Church. They have an amazing sack lunch program in the summer that is fully funded. And they might be able to let you know the organizations that fund food distribution. So I think you're going down the right path. I do.
We have to help these people.
Well, of course, I, I don't disagree. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, if they're doing sack lunches, they might be able to hand out some extra sack lunches right away.
Yeah.
To the Second Reform Church.
They do a great job.
Okay, anyone else? I'm sorry. The sack lunches in some.
Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Anyone else? All right, we'll, we will adjourn to our policy and planning to discuss the Hazel Street sidewalk project or get an update.
All right, Mr. Mayor, as Mayor Horst stated, what we're going to talk about this evening is an update on the Hazel Street sidewalk project. It is important to note that we have been working on this for some time, and we do have a plan in place or proposed plan for this, and we're looking for direction from council. Council order approved this plan this evening. We would solicit construction bids and try to get this project completed by this fall. Ultimately, when we talk about Hazel Street, we'd be starting on the sidewalk that would just be right at Home Street and extend out to East Park Lane. And as you can see on Hazel Street, the red highlighted area is we're proposing to place the sidewalk on the east side of the street as well. Now Garden and Associates has estimated the cost of the project just right at a hundred thousand dollars. And what we're here this evening to do is solicit this direction from council. We want to make sure we answer any questions that the council may have. As a part of our project, once again, we would be passing out informational sheets to the neighbors along Hazel Street on this and notifying them of the project. But before we got to that point, we wanted to address any concerns or questions that council may have. And we do have our engineer in attendance this evening, Mr. Brad Udomar, as well if there are questions on this project, so.
Comments, questions? It isn't going to be easy, but it's needed.
Yeah.
How much, just general grading work needs to be done around?
So for the most part, you'll, you'll see it's not an easy corridor, but it, the sidewalk, we have managed to miss all of the trees and the other utility structures there. Most of the grading is not a lot.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to discuss this item, and big picture, we are proposing an increase in building permit fees for the city of Pella. Now, considering this item, I want to also emphasize, we spent quite a bit of time this past budget year actually discussing two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget, that is the budget that will be starting fiscal year, that will start on July first. And what we discussed was the recent property tax legislation in the state of Iowa that has effectively capped annual growth revenues for property taxes. And what we discussed during the budget sessions was the importance of realizing that the city is somewhat limited as far as increasing property taxes to support operations. Equally important to note, we also discussed for user fees and people that use services for the city, that we likely need to consider potential increases to those fees as well. So considering this item this evening, the building permit fees, the last time we increased building permit fees in the city of Pella was two thousand and seven, we did do a survey of building permit fees proposal that we have this evening, we play, we feel it's very comparable both to neighboring communities as well as to the Duane Metro area. But overall, when you look at the fees that are being proposed this evening, the building permit is an increase of just right around thirty percent on this as well. Now, as far as the fees that we're discussing this evening, the city's Building Code of Appeal Board of Appeals unanimously approved these fees after meeting on June second of this year, so they have been reviewed by the Building Board of Appeals. But overall, you may be asking, as far as the proposal this evening, what does this do to the cost of a house, the cost of a building house? So when we look at a typical home in parade ridge that has a valuation, let's just say, I don't know if it's a typical home, but in this case, the scenario is a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar home, this could be in parade ridge, this could be anywhere in the city of Pella, it's a new home, the current fees that that house would charge for the building permit would be two thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. If council were to adopt an ordinance increasing the development fees or the building permit fees, it'd be up to two thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars as well. So once again, what this is intended to do is help support general fund operations that have been somewhat capped as far as our ability here, the city's been somewhat limited as far as being able to increase property taxes to support operations, and this is under just the thought, on a go-forward basis, as people utilize fees and services in the city of Pella, we're going to probably have to, well, we will likely have to, we will have to increase service level fees on this to be able to continue to perform the same types of service levels that we're currently doing. So again, thirty percent increase in building permit fees, we feel it's very comparable both to the Duane Metro area as well as surrounding communities, building permit fees have not been increased since two thousand and seven. The Building Code of Appeals Board did review this unanimously approved the proposed fees. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation, be more happy to answer any questions the council may have on the side of it.
Is the base fee just based on percentage of the valuation?
Yes.
Oh, no extra raise fees, but our costs are rising, so seems fair to me. Yeah, at oh seven, we're off touch. Okay?
Okay.
And then, last thing, any, any updates, see, got some things scheduled?
Items, we have some heavy agendas coming up in the month of July, and these are the items that are still on our list, and we anticipate will be addressed by council in the next thirty to sixty days on it as well, but we'd be also happy to answer any questions the council may have on any other project the city is currently involved with.
Any idea when we'll be burying those power lines at Charles, Charles Park Fair Park?
Yeah, the, the power lines, it, the latest timeline that we had was two thousand, it was actually this year, accounted by December thirty-first. Nate Spurgit recently submitted the material, but obviously we're looking at the materials as far as being able to bury and bury the line, but that is scheduled to be done by December thirty-first of this year, so.
Has there been any more discussion with the Corps of Engineers or whatever on the Dog Park?
Yes, well, we've been in contact with the Army Corps of Engineers, and we also have the list of duties that they've agreed to do to support the Dog Park. The next step is just to coordinate a time with the Dog Park Association, to come back to council during policy and planning, discuss what the Corps is willing to do, the financial commitment for the project, as well as the Pella Dog Park Association, and what they're willing to do for the project, and then we'll be able to make a decision on the project.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Hopkins, Brandon Horst, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call a roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Karlstone?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
We are adjourned.